Hi, gentlemen. We will take comments from members of the audience. And I have a request by Sean Gilner. Sean, you can come forward.
We should get started with the camera. Where?
May I also submit?
All right.
Okay. Dear Board members, I want to thank you for adding this important item to your agenda. I thank you not as a candidate, but as an Area 1 resident, a concerned citizen. And I've all -- excuse me. And I've learned today that the only female now serving on the Azusa Planning Commission. To Trustee Woods, upon a thorough review of the subcommittee's report, I request that you spare Citrus College, as well as the Board of Trustees, the faculty, staff, students, and most importantly, the residents of Area 1 from this saga, and resign immediately. I'm confident that the Attorney General's office will allow this board leave to bring suit against you for the seat you currently hold, and that a judge will further decide what we all already know: your interests lie elsewhere, as does your domicile. Your resignation will not only delay the inevitable, but will avoid all parties involved from continued legal expenses, free yourself from potential criminal prosecution. I remind you of your pay you received, as well as your vote for lifetime benefits during your tenure on the Board, and allow the residents of Area 1, both Azusa and Duporty, to elect a new representative, one who will fully represent his or her community's interest. As of today, it is clear that your representation of Area 1's Azusa and Duporty is no longer required. I would encourage the Board of Trustees to work with Trustee Woods and his counsel to facilitate his resignation, and that it be done without further delay. Should Woods not resign, I think it would be best for the Board to provide a timeframe for which this matter will be further handled and when litigation will be filed. Thank you. I believe he was submitted. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Perry. I'm Chris Keeler. I'm an attorney with Fagan-Friedman in Full Frost, and I was asked to advise the ad hoc subcommittee on the matter of the inquiry to the residents of Dr. Gary Woods. And tonight I've been asked to summarize the report. For those of you who've seen the report, it's in total over 300 pages long, and I was told I have about 10 minutes, so I need to go to about 30 pages a minute, I guess. No, but I'll have --
Page 15.
Thank you. I'll try to do it justice and hit some of the major points, and then respond to questions if members of the Board have questions. First of all, by way of background, and They cited as one of the reasons that led them to be interested in this issue, a letter that came forward from a former postal worker who claimed that Dr. Woods had infrequently collected his mail from a prior mailing address, and that that led them to be interested in whether he actually was actually where he claims to reside. The -- a couple of representatives of the CCFA or CTA and CCFA appeared at that March 19 meeting and presented the results of an investigation that looked into the issue. I would just like to point out here, there's a report and there's an appendix. And in the appendix, I have -- under the first tab, I have some summaries of statements that were made at that meeting. A couple of them are statements that were not made at that meeting. It was information given to me by CCFA. However, Ron Reel and John Fincher both spoke, but a couple of the people, Dwayne Schaefer and Lynette Ngaia, did not actually speak at that meeting. Nevertheless, their summaries were included in the report. They didn't actually speak based on time. I just wanted to clarify that. But the representatives of CCFA encouraged the Board to look into this matter and to move forward at the next meeting to vacate the seat and appoint a successor. The Board at the meeting on April 2 authorized legal counsel to work with the Board and consider this issue or advise the Board on this issue. Subsequent to that, at the regular meeting of May 7, the Board voted to create an ad hoc subcommittee to do an inquiry into this matter. And I worked with that subcommittee, and the subcommittee, of course, was composed of Trustee Keith and Trustee Rasmasan. The original term of the subcommittee was relatively short to end in the end of July, and it was extended by action of the Board until the end of September. So it was a subcommittee of limited duration, limited scope of authority. So the subcommittee met first on May 15, so about a week after initially being formed, the subcommittee met, gave instructions to me as legal counsel to take some actions, including gathering information from CCFA, gathering publicly available records, requesting specifically Dr. Woods' participation in the inquiry, including requesting records from him, as well as a meeting to hear his side of the story. On June 4, I met with Mr. Fincher. I collected information that they had gathered, both from public documentation, as well as the investigation that they undertook. After that, Dr. Woods' attorney sent a letter to President Keith. And I think, probably motivated by a concern that this Board would recommend vacating the seat immediately without going through a quo veranto action, Mr. George Yen, the attorney for Dr. Woods, encouraged this Board not to hold a kangaroo court and not take any drastic action, essentially. And at that time, he asserted that a quo veranto proceeding through the Attorney General was, quote, "the proper vehicle for a Board of Trustees of a community college district to test whether one of its members was entitled to hold office on account of the member's residency status." So that concern was noted. I wrote a letter back to Mr. Yen, saying, "No decisions have been made by the Board of the Subcommittee at this point. We're engaged in an inquiry." This inquiry is, I didn't use the terms kangaroo court, but the inquiry is not a kangaroo court. It's the same type of inquiry that other public agencies do when considering whether to move forward with a quo veranto action. And by way of explanation, the Attorney General doesn't have an investigative arm that comes in and does an investigation to determine whether someone is actually a resident or not. Rather, the Attorney General relies on the party seeking leave to sue in quo veranto to present facts and evidence that would justify granting leave to sue in quo veranto. So it's incumbent on the relater, or the party seeking leave to sue in quo veranto, to produce those facts to the Attorney General, and then the Attorney General decides. And I tried to convey that back to Mr. Yen, saying, "This wasn't some sort of extraordinary proceeding," but rather, the same type of inquiry that other public agencies make when they're trying to decide whether to pursue a quo veranto action. In that same letter, I requested a number of documents, documents that are both the types of documents that the Attorney General has relied on in the past when considering legal residency or domicile, as well as some additional documentation that might also be indicative of residence, kind of in the more of a modern world than some of these old Attorney General opinions that we have. I also requested to meet with Mr. Yen and Dr. Woods at his apartment in Azusa. And that was a letter that was sent on July 30. Okay? So I didn't get an immediate timely response, but eventually, about a month later, we were able to arrange a time to receive documentation, and you'll see that a lot of documentation was received, and also to have a meeting in Dr. Woods' apartment. Unfortunately, he wasn't present. I was informed the previous day that he'd be teaching at the time, and he wouldn't be available. I had hoped to meet with him and talk to him, but I was able to see the apartment and collect documentation from him. So as far as the facts that were gathered, well, actually, that meeting happened on September 5, just to clarify, so it just happened near the end of last week. So at that point, I received that information. We had already planned to produce a report for the meeting today. I think we had to submit an agenda item on the previous Wednesday, so we had to be ready to go forward, even though the report wasn't complete at that time. But given the fact that this subcommittee was of limited duration, it was felt that the subcommittee needed to finish the report, and luckily, we did receive that additional information. As far as the facts that were gathered during the inquiry, the committee looked at the Saldano Senior Village Apartments. That's where the apartment is that Dr. Woods claims as his legal residence. It's a one-bedroom unit in a seniors-only, independent-living community, and the current rental rates, as posted on their website, is $850 a month. It sits in the community of Azusa, which, according to the latest census, the average home price in that area, or the, excuse me, median value of an owner-occupied house is $359,000 approximately. The per capita income is about $19,000, and median household income is about $53,000. The residence that is the other residence at issue is located at 1212 Arno Drive in Sierra Madre. And we'll talk about the results of the CCFA investigation, but that's the residence where they claimed that Dr. Woods really lived, that he spent time at that Sierra Madre address. So a title report as to that address shows that Dr. Woods purchased it, along with another purchaser, so he's a co-owner, he's a one-third owner of that property, in 2011, and the purchase price was $1,140,000. It's in a really nice neighborhood, and it's a custom home on a hillside. There are pictures included in the report, which came from a prior listing on the MLS, showing that it is a very nice property, and there's no doubt about that. It's in a very nice community. Average home or median home prices are $770,000 in that community. The median income for residents is $52,000 per capita, and a household income of $84,000, so relatively upscale neighborhood if you, you know. That's my editorial comment, but that's how I would consider it. So after concerns about the residency arose, CTA, the California Teachers Association, authorized an investigation and surveillance. And that happened in, at the end of February and the beginning of March 2013. And during that surveillance, Dr. Woods was observed going to work in the morning from the Arno Drive residence in Sierra Madre and returning there in the evening. And there was a consistent pattern of getting up in the morning, apparently, and going to work, and then returning to that home in the evening. And there was evidence of sporadic connection or contact with the Azusa apartment. And in the appendix, we included a narrative of the investigation, as well as exhibits, which are photographs. And so that's in Exhibit 12. And that was, initially, the investigator provided the spreadsheet that is Exhibit Z, as well as all of the photographs, but he hadn't prepared a narrative of the investigation. And so I met with him, and we prepared this narrative. On June 29, a resident of a neighboring building in the Saldano Village Apartments, who by his own account spends a lot of time on his porch and sees what happens, was interviewed. And he indicated that he regularly saw Dr. Woods at the apartment in Azusa, but that he essentially didn't believe that he slept there, that he saw him in the afternoons, that he would collect his mail, he, you know, he would park his car in his parking space, collect his mail, go in and check out on his, check out his apartment, but he didn't believe that he spent the night there, that he spent, you know, holidays or weekends or what we call times of repose in that apartment, but rather that he visited it mostly just to get the mail and check it out, just to observe the apartment. On August 27, the CCFA mailed an invitation to Dr. Woods to participate in the Candidates' Forum on September 4. It was sent to the 450 North Saldano Avenue address, and Dr. Woods claimed that he didn't receive it. A couple of different people attested to the fact that they actually did mail it via regular U.S. mail to that address.
... to leave to sue in quo veranto. Before we ask for a motion for any kind of action, George Yen has requested to speak to the panel.
Thank you, President Keith, and thank you for the trustees of Citrus College for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you. I'm just going to speak from some prepared statements that I've made, and then perhaps answer any questions that you might have. After reviewing the ad hoc Board Subcommittee's report regarding the inquiry to the domicile of Dr. Gary Woods and taking into account the facts and law concerning the matter, we strongly urge the Board of Trustees to conclude this proceeding by taking no further action. The Board should do this to end the process that is fast becoming a charade and a serious waste of taxpayers' money. The report states, and I quote, "The primary issue is whether a vacancy on the Board arises by failure to comply with the residency requirement. This question hinges on the meaning of the term residency for the purposes of Education Code Section 7202/2 and inhabitant for the purposes of Government Code Section 1770. The report identifies that the terms inhabitant and resident for purposes of these statutes means domicile. Thus, the report states, quote, 'The question is not whether a trustee is merely residing within the territory of the district, but whether he is, he or she is, domiciled there,' end quote. The report then goes on to state that the test used for making the determination of a, of an office holder's domicile is as follows, and I'll quote from the report. Many factors, and, well, the quote, the report quotes the test, I'm going to quote the test. Many factors enter into this equation, including where an individual is registered to vote, and his or her address for mail, where his or her tax returns are filed, where an automobile is registered, and where a homeowner's exemption or renter's credit is taken. The critical element is one of intent, and while declarations of the individual in this regard are important, such declarations are not determinative; the acts of the individual must be examined as well. The facts and evidence provided by Dr. Woods overwhelmingly supports Dr. Woods' intent that the Azusa apartment is and remains his domicile. Dr. Woods has provided his border registration, his tax returns, his car registration, and evidence of the fact that he has not taken a homeowner's exemption on the Sierra Madre property. All of these documents show that his domicile is 450 North Saldano Avenue, number 242. Moreover, in the interest of full disclosure, Dr. Woods has provided documents that go beyond the test, in fact, responding to every relevant category of the ad hoc Board Subcommittee's expansive inquiry. These additional documents include bank statements, utility bills, sales orders, deeds to his property interests, phone bills, his purse statement, jury summons, and letters, all showing 450 North Saldano Avenue, number 242, is Dr. Woods' domicile. Moreover, Dr. Woods consented to a visit by District Special Counsel to his home. During this visit, the district's lawyer opened drawers, cupboards, closets, inspected Dr. Woods' bathroom, examined what Dr. Woods eats, what cleaning products he uses, his dishes, his silverware, his home electronics, his bed linens, his closet full of clothes, his bathroom supplies, his collection of art, his books, and many other personal items. Following this inspection, the ad hoc Board Subcommittee's attorney and the report concluded, quote, "It is a fully furnished and functional apartment," end quote. In fact, the report concedes, quote, "In sum, the space could be lived in," end quote. This, coupled with the aforementioned documentary evidence, led the report's authors to state, quote, "Dr. Woods satisfies several of the objective technical tests for establishing domicile in Azusa." If Dr. Woods has indeed satisfied, quote, "several of the objective and technical tests establishing domicile," this matter should be over and done with. There is no need to pursue further legal action at taxpayer expense. Yet, the ad hoc Board Subcommittee, which is comprised of two of Dr. Woods' apparent critics on the Board, appears determined to manipulate the facts to serve their own political purposes. They cite, for instance, that Dr. Woods owns property outside of Azusa, that he does his banking in San Gabriel, that he is a member of community organizations in Pasadena and Arcadia, that his utility usage appears low, and that his telephone calls are too few for their tastes. They also question why Dr. Woods would live in an apartment in Azusa. Let's look at these items in brief. First, Dr. Woods has provided copies of the deeds to the various properties in which he is an owner or part-owner. These include deeds showing a joint tenancy in 3912 Blanch Street, Pasadena, a joint tenancy in 848 Huntington Drive, and in 2 Arcadia, and a one-third interest in 1212 Arno Drive, Sierra Madre. The fact that Dr. Woods has invested in part ownership of these diverse residential properties does not prove that he is domiciled in each of these places. Dr. Woods also owns a commercial office building at 740 North Lake Avenue, Pasadena. Again, that fact does not show that he is domiciled there. Clearly, what these aforementioned property deeds show is that Dr. Woods has made real estate investments in cities outside of the one where he lives. This does not disqualify him from office. Trustees are not barred from owning properties outside of the city where they live. Next, Dr. Woods is not disqualified from office for having a bank account in a bank branch of San Gabriel, which is a short drive from Azusa and a convenience not from work, or for that matter, in New York City, where he also holds bank accounts. And the fact that Dr. Woods' membership of the Tournament of Roses in Pasadena or the Elks Club in Arcadia does not mean that he is domiciled in those cities or that he lacks connections to Azusa. They only show that he is civically engaged in the San Gabriel Valley, where he was raised, where he works, and where he lives. In fact, in addition to representing the Azusa area on the Citrus College Board, Dr. Woods was also appointed to Los Angeles County Oversight Board for the city of Azusa, as well as his successor agency. A simple look at Dr. Woods' Board of Trustees biography webpage will relate just a sampling of his civic involvement in Azusa and its vicinity. Apparently, those weren't deemed connections to Azusa, but I find that somewhat outrageous, but we'll leave it at that. Moreover, Dr. Woods' utility bills reflect the lifestyle of an individual who is a Board of Trustee, moreover, Dr., excuse me, moreover, Dr. Woods' utility bills reflect the lifestyle of an individual who is a Board of Trustee member, a professor, a lawyer, an active volunteer in the community, and a son who cares for his elderly mother on a daily basis. He does not spend a lot of time at home. That does not mean that he does not live there. With regard to his phone bill, like a lot of people, Dr. Woods primarily uses his cellphone and his office phone in Pasadena City College to take care of most of his calls. The ad hoc Board Subcommittee conveniently neglects to mention that the phone bills for Dr. Woods' home phone clearly show that numerous calls were made late at night and early in the morning, evidencing that he does, in fact, repose at 450 North Saldano Avenue, number 242. We invite the Board to look, and the public, to look closely at these bills and see that that is true. Further, the alleged statements made by a postal worker about a property that Mr. Woods resided at 20 to 30 years ago cannot be taken seriously, and the supposed observations of the private investigator are inconclusive, circumstantial, and highly speculative events. Finally, the report questions why Dr. Woods would choose to live at 450 North Saldano Avenue, number 242, when he's a professor, lawyer, et cetera. We would ask the Board and the public, is it really so surprising that Dr. Woods would choose to live in a well-managed, safe, and immaculate gated apartment complex that is located close to Citrus College, close to his elderly mother's home, close to the properties that he has invested in, close to the places where he volunteers, and extremely affordable to boot? Of course, the answer is no. While appearing before the Attorney General is definitely preferable to the political charade this Subcommittee is engaging in, ultimately, a quo veranto suit will not succeed. And I think we need to be very clear about that. I don't think that you fully got that picture from the presentation made by the counsel, the special counsel for the Subcommittee. Indeed, in similar cases, the California Attorney General has generally rejected attempts by parties seeking leave to sue or veranto, especially under these circumstances. For example, in one case involving charges that a community college district trustee was not domiciled in her district, this was at Rio Hunter College, actually, the Attorney General held, quote, "In our view, relators' allegations that defendant has purchased a residence outside of the district and resides there part-time, even when coupled with a conclusionary belief that defendant does not intend to remain at her residence within the district, are not sufficient when weighed against direct evidence of intent on the part of defendant which is materially corroborated by her conduct. Under similar circumstances, we have consistently denied applications to file forward into actions to test the question of residency," end quote. In the end, the District Board should spare the taxpayers' precious resources and take no further action on what is looking more and more like a politically motivated witch hunt. As the ad hoc Board Subcommittee report states, and I quote, "After consultation with legal counsel, a review of the facts, and a discussion of relevant legal standards, the Subcommittee believes that there is insufficient evidence to conclude at this time with a degree of certainty necessary to vacate a seat and appoint a successor, that Dr. Woods is not a resident of the district." What more is there? That's it. Game over. Case is closed. Why waste more taxpayers' money to chase after this witch hunt? The volume of documentary evidence that Dr. Woods has provided strongly outweighs the inconclusive, circumstantial, and wildly speculative nature of the ad hoc Board Subcommittee's supposed evidence. Thus, there is no rational basis for pursuing this matter any further. Indeed, the Board should be aware that courts, quote, "are also mindful of the general principle that ambiguities concerning the right to hold public office should be resolved in favor of eligibility," end quote. Now, I want to just focus on that point. We are not conceding at all that we're in a situation where, you know, of ambiguities here. I think the situation is quite clear, as shown by the evidence that Dr. Woods has provided. However, even if this case were somewhat ambiguous, as it seems the report concedes, the courts and the Attorney General will, you know, err on the side of caution and resolve the question of the right to hold public office in favor of eligibility, right? Even in close cases, the office holder wins. And we're not even saying this is a close case, but I think you guys all need to think about that very clearly. Pardon, sorry, use that familiar term. Consequently, the best course of action is to end this process now and take no further action. We urge the Board to act accordingly. So that concludes my prepared statement, and we'd be willing to answer any questions that you have. But before we go on, I really do want to take issue with some of the characterizations that were made in the report. I think Dr. Ortal, you know, made note of this in his earlier comments. A lot of times, we had a lot, there was a lot of wildly speculative conclusions made on very little facts. You know, there might be a detail made, and then some wild conclusion that was not supported by any of those facts made. Now, that might be fine and entertaining here, but are we going to ask the district's taxpayers to spend thousands of dollars, tens of thousands probably, to go to the Attorney General's office and put that before the Attorney General's office? Do you think the Attorney General's office or a court for that matter later on down the line will actually take any of the evidence that has been supposedly, you know, put forward, such as, you know, the idea that Dr. Woods doesn't have patio furniture? That that's a damning piece of evidence? I mean, that kind of thing, which is all now part of the public record, which will be pointed out to the Attorney General's office and to a court? Do you think any of those decision-makers will actually take that kind of evidence seriously? Are you going to put the taxpayers through this ordeal with this kind of evidence in mind, after you've seen a host of documentary evidence that meets every legal standard that the Attorney General's and the office and the court has set forward? I think you all need to think very clearly about this. You may, I don't know what animosities or You may, I don't know what animosities or other kinds of things are at play here, but, you know, think of the District, think of the taxpayers, and think of what's actually going to happen as this thing proceeds forward. So that's it.
I would like to change your motion.
I move that we take no further action.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, I, well, we need discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Let me speak from the heart in this case, okay? It seems to me we really need to get back to doing educational things and let the campaign go to the campaign, and people go back and forth and that, and that's part of democracy. But we, as a Board, should sort of try to put things back together again, work as a group, yeah, have our differences of opinion, but stay out of that political arena and get back to educating people. You know, that's really what I feel in my heart, because, well, I've been on the Board 44 years, and I've never seen it like this, where we're at each other's throats. And it seems like we need repair. We need, we need a chance to step back from a, let, let the democracy take its course, let the voters decide, and they'll do that in just a few weeks, and step back and do our job of keeping Citrus one of the finest institutions in the land. That's, that's my plea. It's not a vigorous argument, but it's a heartfelt one.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there another motion?
Yes, I would like to move that the Board of Trustees authorize legal counsel to file on the District's behalf an application for leave to sue in quo rato to determine whether Dr. Gary Woods is ineligible to hold office based on residency outside his trustee area.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, how much has this been cost us? Since we've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on legal costs, isn't it time to start putting it into seats for students and our educational program? Any individual can make that file. They've got all the information here. We don't have to make ourselves a party of it and pay for that expensive legal costs.
Are there any other comments?
I do want to make a comment, and I've written it down. In March, a question about Dr. Woods' residency was raised publicly by CTA and its local code, Citrus College Faculty Association. The Board took that issue seriously because trustees are elected by trustee area to ensure that each community has a voice in the governance of the district. A responsible, effective trustee is connected to his or her constituents, both by attending community events in an official capacity and by everyday contact with students, employees, neighbors, and local business owners. A healthy Board relies on the trustees to bring to each policy discussion the needs and values of the community that they represent. Acting on this concern at a public meeting in May of 2013, the Board of Trustees formed an ad hoc committee to consider the residency of Dr. Woods, gather facts, and prepare a report, which may include a recommendation for action. The Committee's questions were guided by law and the belief that all constituents in the Citrus Community College District deserve to be represented by a bona fide resident of their community. Dr., the Subcommittee believes a substantial question exists whether Dr. Woods is a resident of Azusa. For this reason, this issue merits consideration by the Attorney General, who is authorized to make an independent determination whether a substantial question about residency exists and whether a public purpose would be served by a legal challenge to Dr. Woods' office.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I think it's such a waste of public taxpayer dollars for a political party. And when the Board is so closely split, and there's going to be an election just in a few weeks, it's, it's not a good, and it also suggests a, other trustee area is trying to dictate who will be in a different trustee area, instead of letting the voters decide themselves. To me, it's just disenfranchising the people in trustee area, number one.
I have to tell you, on the contrary, I think it's looking out for the people in Azusa. I will call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes Page 2. The Board of Education, Board of Education, Board of Trustees will adjourn at this time. End of both sessions.
Before we adjourn, I would just like to publicly thank the ad hoc committee. I personally, and I'm sure the rest of us all, appreciate all the work that you did and put in, you put in for this. It took a lot of your time, so thank you.